Well, good morning, everybody. Sorry, I had a couple of technical difficulties logging in this morning. Um, but uh, thank you everyone for um, being here today. I uh, want to wish everybody a happy new year, uh, a wonderful 2023 and our partnership as we work together. Um, I'm Sue Johnson, the president of the Frederick County Board of Education. And um, uh, the first item that we have uh, on our agenda is an introduction of all attendees. And if it's um, I don't recall historically how we've done this before. Um, so does anyone, shall we, shall we introduce our guests first? Okay, and so um, is delegate Pippi on here? I don't see.
I'm here. Good morning.
Oh, okay, so I, i- i- is it okay, uh, delegate Pippi, if I hand you over to you for introductions on the delegation?
Um, sure, sure. Uh, let's see here, I have a a list of, looks like who's here, so I'll just kind of rattle off the, the names that I see. Uh, so it looks like Delegate Elect April Miller is here, Delegate Silibertti is here. Uh, Senator Elect and Vice Chair of the Delegation, Bill Folden is here, um, scrolling down. Uh, Senator Elect Karen Lewis Young is here, Delegate Elect Karen Simpson is here. Delegate Ken Kerr, Delegate Elect Chris Sturfer Fair, um, and Delegate Elect William Valentine. So you have a great representation of the delegation here from Frederick County.
Excellent, thank you very much. And uh, on the, the Board of Education uh, side, uh, we have uh, Vice President Dean Rose, who I see on my screen. Um, in addition, uh, Karen Yoho, um, Board Member Karen Yoho. And I don't see her name up here. So is, is Ms. Yoho on the call?
She was here logging in during transition. She may be logging back. She may have to log in again. She was.
Um, and then uh, w- working down, I do see uh, Mr. David Bass on here. And I just received a text message from Karen, so let me go ahead and she's lost a signal, um, so she'll hopefully uh, rejoin us here shortly. And in addition, uh, just uh, for the members, we have um, Ray Gallagher. And I'm looking for Mr. Jay. I don't see him, Mr. Jay, okay. Um, and then uh, Board Member Nancy Allen. And am I missing anyone? On the board? Dean? I think, I think, I think we have everybody.
David Bass is here.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and I had, uh, I had seen them. And then um, uh, we also have our uh, Catherine Rich, who makes sure that we are here present and, and doing everything. And then um, on our first item of the agenda, I guess if, if uh, if Karen, if Ms. Yoho is, is not, um, oh, she's just joined the call. So I'll just um, see if, Ms. Yoho, can you hear me? Ms. Yoho? Okay, well, I, I obviously having some tech- technical difficulties with her. She's on the first item of the agenda, the uh, Board of Education Legislative Principles. Um, if, if it's okay with you all, uh, we also have her down for um, the Lynx Funding as um, our presenter for that. So um, Dr. Sergo, if it's okay, do you mind uh, picking up on the blueprint funding?
Sure, happy to. So, good morning, everybody. Uh, my name is Sarah Sergo. I'm the Chief of Staff uh, for Frederick County Public Schools. I also serve as the Implementation Coordinator for Maryland's Blueprint for the Future. And I am joined by my three uh, co-leads as we steer this work together. Uh, Leslie Pellegrino, who is our Chief Financial Officer, Dr. Eric Lord Phillips, who is our Public Affairs Executive Director, and Heather Claybaugh, who is our Budget Director. And I believe that the ask for today's presentation was to really focus on some of the funding requirements as it connects to legislative priorities. Um, so I imagine you all are quite familiar with the Maryland Blueprint and the spirit of what the Blueprint attempts to accomplish. And from a funding perspective, I, I always think it's important to know that what a lot of people talk about with respect to the funding is about the 75% rule. And really what the, the rule refers to is sort of making sure that the dollars that are provided to districts are um, making it to the way of the students for whom they are designed to serve. And so they call that sort of an attributable expenses um, method, where um, we receive funding, some are restricted funds, some are unrestricted funds. But as we look at how we manage those funds, some are centrally managed, some are living inside the schoolhouse. Um, the Blueprint really asks us to think very deeply about how we budget our money and also how we draw a straight line from that funding to the actual student for whom it was designed to serve. Um, the Blueprint Funding prioritizes the same student groups that the pillars represent. So that includes students with special education needs, that includes students who are receiving um, pre-K services. So a lot of the funding goes to our provision of pre-K. Um, also for all of our college and career readiness initiatives. So a recent example is free tuition for duly enrolled students who are attending Frederick Community College as a local and immediate example. It also looks at some comparable wage index adjustments. And so that has to do with how we ensure that funding um, allows us to bring our salaries for our employees, at least particularly our teachers, up to the minimum threshold of $60,000 by um, the fiscal year requirement. We're within a half a percent of doing that already. And then it also looks at transitional and supplemental instruction. So there are some very specific ways in which we have to account for funds and then demonstrate that we've used those funds, at least 75% of them directly to the level of the student. Um, Leslie, I'm gonna kick it over to you to fill in the blanks for anything I might have missed, you and Heather, from the financial perspective, because a lot of this is about financial reporting.
Thank you, and good morning to everyone. The Blueprint Funding for Frederick County um, Public Schools saw for the first time this current year the implementation of all the funding formulas that were recommended through the Blueprint Legislation. And for Frederick County, that meant we got an additional $44 million. Now, we got that not just because of the Blueprint Legislation, but also because of the growth that Frederick County Public Schools is seeing. Um, Frederick County Public Schools is one of the few school systems that is seeing significant growth. Um, right now, as of last year, we were the um, fastest growing system within the state, both in raw numbers and in percent of student population. So that was huge for us. Um, you'll hear, I'm sure, from other school districts in the state that talk about not having enough enrollment or not being back to their pre-pandemic enrollment. Frederick County can definitely not say that. We are there and past that by far. Um, when we're talking about the foundation, um, we are projected next year to grow, to, to continue to grow. So we will see growth in our foundation forming, foundation formula going forth. A couple of the areas I wanted to highlight from a funding perspective, the first one was our pre-K funding. We are getting funding for pre-K. Um, there's some issues this year. We were funded for all pre-Ks. Next year, it's gonna be four-year-old pre-K, so it is gonna be a little bit different in the funding um, mechanism for that. But one of the concerns we have is, in the legislation, it called for a mixed delivery system for pre-K. And we, we have had issues here in Frederick County, and so have many of other districts within the state, of finding private providers who want to participate in the state plan. What this means is, this means that we're gonna probably have to ask for an exemption of some of the requirements of the legislation, but also that we are looking to pick up those additional seats, or there's additional slots here within Frederick County Public Schools. But with that comes the need for space. And when Dr. Lebo talks to you about construction, he's gonna talk to you about the many factors that are affecting Frederick County and the need for additional space within our buildings. So not only Frederick County, but other school systems are also hearing or saying the same thing, that to add these full-day, four-year-old and eventually three-year-old programs are gonna require much more space within our schools. So there needs to be additional funding, whether it's part of the capital funding that is currently existing, which we would prefer not to be that, because we already have the great needs for that pot of money, or new money that is um, available for pre-K um, expansion type of um, capital projects. The other area I did wanna um, mention was a concentration of poverty funding that comes through the Blueprint, which is a wonderful um, concept of community schools. We have currently four schools in Frederick County that are in the um, Community School Program. They have been very successful. We're very excited about getting this funding, because it just allows us to fund wraparound services for our schools. Because as you all know, when you've got high concentration of poverty in a school, it affects all the schools and all the students in that system. So this gives us the funding to be able to provide supports to not only the students, but their families. Another item I did wanna mention um, is the addition of Medicaid information for farm students. This was a new part of legislation that was implemented this year. So now the state of Maryland is um, putting together a file each month for us that has Medicaid information of any of our students who are eligible for Medicaid. In Frederick County alone, we have increased our free and reduced numbers by 40% this year. Because what it is, is it's capturing a lot of those students, particularly in our secondary um, schools, our middle and high schools, that for some reason their families didn't fill out the applications or the students didn't get the applications home. Um, and it allows for an increased amount of number of our free and reduced um, students. So you're gonna hear that um, throughout the state. Another big concern I would just wanna mention before I wrap up is inflation. And you're gonna hear this both, both from here and the school systems, and also when you talk about the state budget. Inflation is a huge thing. Everything that we're purchasing now has gone up, whether it's um, our benefits, health insurance, fuel, um, utilities, just even our materials of instructions, all have gone up significantly in this past year. So that is affecting our budget as we move into FY24, and unfortunately will affect you as you balance the state budget. Uh, the blue, when we talk about Blueprint, I also wanna talk about reporting. Um, Blueprint has an enormous amount of reporting requirements. One of the things that we've um, as CFOs have talked about is, is there a way that we could get to um, create a work group or something that would look at the reporting requirements, compare them to other reporting requirements within legislation, and maybe try to streamline this? I'm sure you as legislators and we here in the school systems, we wanna make sure as much of our money goes to the schools and to the students. And if we are burdened with reporting requirements and having to find staff or people to help do the reporting requirements, for every dollar we spend doing that is a dollar that's not going into the classroom. So we would like to eventually look at those reporting requirements and see if we can streamline that. And that is pretty much I had, everything I had on Blueprint. I do wanna mention, though, there is some talk, and I'm sure you've probably heard that as legislators, about free meals for students. During the pandemic, um, there were federal waivers through the United States Department of Agriculture. Those waivers lapsed this year, and we went back to our normal school lunch program. Many states, I believe five states in the um, United States currently have free programs at the state levels. Um, there is legislation that's gonna be introduced also at the legislation this year in Maryland that's gonna request that. This will make a big difference. During the pandemic, we served 10,000 meals a day more when we had free meals. It also reduces that stigma when you're in line for those children who really need it, or even those children who may not qualify by their own, what we call the Alice level, those fam- that have income, they have just enough income not to qualify for free reduced meals, but may have trouble providing m- m- funding and money for their children to have meals. This would take all of that away if we had free meals within the state of Maryland. So I did just wanna mention that, because I do know that's gonna be a topic of discussion this um, year during the legislative session. That is my wrap-up. Any questions? Delegate Young, Senator Young, sorry.
Thanks. Um, Delegate Louis Young.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Gotta differentiate myself from all those other Youngs. Um, you, two, two things, one's a point, the other's a, a question. You wanted to somehow reduce the reporting requirements, and I get that. Um, you wanna spend your time uh, directing time and attention to the students. On the other hand, one of the major components of the Blueprint was accountability. We really wanted to show that these funds were doing what they were supposed to do, that it was working, and that before we threw more money uh, against a priority, we could quantify the results. So how do you find a balance between assuring that accountability, which was a key component of the Blueprint, and those reporting requirements?
That's an excellent point, and it was a big discussion through the whole Kerwin Commission into the recommendations for the Blueprint. I believe what we need to do is look at each of the reports and what is the meaning behind them? And what will it do to assist the legislation to, to be able to evaluate the effectiveness of the legislation and um, the actual purpose is being achieved? And to give you an example, and I don't wanna get us into the weeds, but one of the requirements is, we have to report by January 1st each year, the expenditures of that current year. And I get the gist behind it. You wanna see that the money is going to the schools and being going to the, the proper purposes. I think we need to relook at that requirement, the date. Because if it's due January 1st, that means we're gonna have to start working on that probably in November. So my question is, is that really relevant information to the legislators to see that information? And I get it, it has to do with the timing of the legislative session and all. But we need to probably look at that and see if there's a different date or a different way to get that expenditure information that'd be more meaningful. I, I worry that we'll go through all of that effort, and it will be two full months maybe of expenditures, because really, school systems expenditures don't start really heavily until September, when they, all the teachers are back in force. So those are some of the things we'd like to look at, is each report that we have, what is the purpose of it? And is there a way to streamline it?
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
And of my other comment uh, is a request. And that is, if you have a summary of your notes, would you send it to me? I was trying to write fast and furiously, couldn't keep up. I'm going to be sitting on an education committee, and I really would like to follow up on the points you made, but I just couldn't get it all.
Not a problem. I'd be more than happy to send you that.
Thanks.
Delegate Pippi?
Yes, I, I just kinda piggybacking on what Senator-elect Karen Lewis Young said, was that, you know, generally, when you are asking for more money, um, I think the folks that are potentially appropriating the, you know, said money are gonna want more accountability. And I, and then, and I know, at least from my perspective, you know, there was a lot of discussion about how much the Blueprint would cost, you know? And ironically, uh, here we are, talking about it's not enough. You know, inflation, you know, other things, other factors, mitigating factors, whatnot. But um, I would just say that um, for me, you know, the accountability has to be there, because there are some jurisdictions that are not great at allocating those monies, um, you know, as it pertains to results. I think Frederick County, for the most part, does a pretty good job. Um, but statewide, I would have a real hard time um, voting for any, any money increase without more accountability. So just, just food for thought, but thank you.
Not a problem. No, I am, we're definitely not saying not to have the accountability. It's just to look at it and see if there's a way to streamline it and to make it more effective for you. Um, and to help the legislators with your purpose and looking during the session about how the money is being spent, and is it being spent in all 24 jurisdictions in the proper way.
And Delegate Pippi, if I could just chime in, and also um, Senator-elect Louis Young, uh, with the, the, there's numerous deadlines that have been pushed back already um, for producing reports. And, and so I think uh, from a board member's perspective, it makes, it, it causes me some concern when we see, you know, cascading delays in, in like, perhaps like, forming and appointing the AIB, and then when your implementation plans are due. And so as a system, um, when you see these deadlines being pushed back, it, it gives me a sense that, you know, things are still being put together. And uh, I have this idea that there might be some surprises in there, and I don't like surprises. So from a board member's perspective, when I see these cascaded delays and when things are being formed and when implementation plans are being due, I wonder if we're like, developing things on the fly. And so I don't know if anyone can speak to that for me.
I mean, this was um, you know, we debated this, this legislation to death. Um, and you know, there was lots of concerns. I mean, I, I, you know, starting off with, everybody wants an improvement in education. Everybody wants better results. Everyone wants better prepared children. You know, uh, more prepared to enter the workforce in some capacity. But yeah, I mean, when you have such a comprehensive piece of legislation, um, there was concerns raised then, um, there's concerns raised now. Um, and I think I would agree with you, uh, Ms. Johnson, that as a board member, I would have concerns if they changed the rules or changed the goalposts, you know, for what their expectations of you guys are. Um, and I don't have an answer for that, because it, it's, 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 it's a big bill. They put in a lot of goals in there and a lot of requirements. And I think there's still a lot of people trying to figure out how they're gonna achieve those, without throwing more money at the problem, which means ultimately raising taxes and other things. So um, there's a lot of concerns, and I, I share the same concerns, quite frankly, that you do, um, as it pertains to those issues.
And if I can just uh, add in, I think most importantly, um, as an individual board member, I would like to see just us working as partners, because there, there is no like, long track record on this. And that if, if everybody knows we all have great intent in trying to achieve um, the, the, the most uh, return for our dollar investment, and that we're doing what's right for the kids in the best way possible, and that we're improving uh, academic outcomes. Um, if we're just working as partners and helping each other, I think that, you know, if, I, I, I would like to make that commitment from my perspective, that we're, that we will do all we can um, in this time of some unknowns, um, to help ensure that we deliver the best system. Um, and, and also too, just in the introductions, I, I had neglected to mention our superintendent, uh, Dr. Dyson uh, is, is here. And I would love to afford her an opportunity um, at, whenever she is willing uh, to, to just uh, give her own introduction and, and have a moment to, to speak to the entire body at the meeting, if that's okay. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, you let me know when you're ready, but I, I would just like to say good morning to everyone. I think this discussion in this meeting is timely as we get ready for our own budget season. And I would just uh, like to comment um, a little bit to um, the comments around our accountability. I think that for a long time, we have been chasing, you know, different goals. I think what's challenging for a school system is that we have this legislation that seeks to transform um, how we do teach and learn, and the outcomes for students, and how we start at the primary level to really get at um, better outcomes when our students leave us. And at the same time, we still have the Every Student Succeeds Act. Um, and we have certain um, expectations from Maryland State Department of Education. And so anyway, in terms of accountability, that we can sort of make those connections. I'm all for increased accountability. We need to do better, and we have to own that in every system for our students to ensure there are favorable outcomes for every child every day. At the same time, it'd be helpful, and I think that is exactly what Ms. Pellegrino was alluding to, that um, you know, there are some processes, accountability measures already in place. How do we sort of look at each piece of accountability in the Blueprint? And also what's required under ESSA, and sort of make some alignment so that systems aren't mired in just generating report, and that we forget to look at impact and how we were able to achieve that impact. But I'm happy to be here today, so happy to be the superintendent of Frederick County Public Schools, and to meet everyone of you, one of, one of you, and work alongside you um, to unpack uh, the legislation and to really do what's right for children.
Hi, good morning. It's April. Um, I have uh, or Delegate-Elect Miller, I guess. Um, I have a few questions as far as, one would be the difference between the accountability with the Implementation Board and the State Board. Uh, do you feel that those roles need to be better defined um, as you're generating reports and, and things like that? I know it is difficult um, to kind of balance that, but the fiscal impact of the Accountability Board um, with possibly potentially being able to withhold funding, how has that impacted um, you uh, from, from the report generating standpoint?
So I'll just jump in and see if Ms., you know, to give Ms. Pellegrino an opportunity um, to elaborate. But I think it's exactly what Dr. Dyson just illustrated. And so the AIB reporting and our, is, is, we have a very clear definition of when those reports are due and what they're for. Um, but they are layered on top of the Maryland State Department of Education reporting. And so I don't think it's about which one's better or worse. It's just an acknowledgement. It's sort of, if you were to, AIB is tracking their own reporting. And MSDE is tracking their own reporting, and there are many times where they are duplicative, or they overlap, and um, are not necessarily cognizant for some of the other reporting requirements that are happening. And some of those reporting requirements are local and immediate. For example, our superintendent's recommended budget, which will be released next week. So to have a, a January 1 report due on, when we're also trying to get our budget done, it's just a matter of um, sort of stretching our available staff to do all of those things well and make meaning out of the reports. So um, all of our reports that go to the AIB, there are copies that are sent to MSDE, and they also go to the Department of Legislative Services. Um, so everybody's getting the same information, but it's, it's a, a set of additional reports. And so it's a question of, are there ways that we can um, collapse them or lay them all out on a timeline that um, is sensitive to the other work happening and gets you all the information that you need, AIB needs, to make important and relevant decisions?
I completely agree on that. Do you guys have a synopsis of the timeline? And I would encourage you also um, to, as um, Senator-elect Karen Lewis Young was saying, like, kinda give us a copy of, of some of these notes or concerns that where we could either make legislative impact. Are there things that need pause? Is there a pause because it's causing, um, as um, Ms. Johnson was saying? Is it causing a lot of um, turmoil, I don't wanna say turmoil, within the system, right? Are there a lot of where you're trying to put pieces together that haven't even been formed at the state level, right? So are there, is there a pause that needs to happen? Um, are there things, like you said, where we can streamline this? If, where we can have that laid out so we can better advocate for you? This is what we need for you, and we need to trust that you're gonna bring us um, what the actual impact on not just the students, but also the staff. Because there's a lot of other pieces to this that we haven't even talked about as far as, um, I mean, one piece that I've heard is the um, the principals and the, and the vice principals needing to return to the classroom, what that's gonna do to staffing models, um, what that's gonna be, you know, in the classroom. So there's a lot of pieces to this, and however you can help us with any kind of summary, um, would be great as, as we go down there.
So yes, we do have that. We track all of the reports uh, by due date, who, who has to complete them and, and completion, and so we can provide that to you. Um, so all of that is available.
All right, great, thank you. Oh, um, I did have another question about the um, the pre-K. When you're looking at the outside private providers, do they have to follow the mandates as far as minimum salary? Um, and those pieces as well, what is your perspective on why we're getting, we're having trouble with? Is it certification issues as far as with the staff? What, what exactly is causing the, uh, why private providers may not want to partner?
We're seeing this, and it's not just a Frederick County um, issue. All the school systems are seeing this with private providers. The, the law does say that the private providers have to give comparable wages and, and fringes to their staff. And as we all know, air fringes here at the school system are very rich and compared to what a lot of times our private providers provide to their employees. So that is a challenge. They also have to meet uh, the Excel's level, which is a qualification levels of the state, such as things about their facilities, the certification of their staff. So all of those things are cost, and a lot of the providers have done basically a cost analysis and said, okay, this is how much I'm gonna have to pay extra. This is the extra revenue that's gonna come in from the state. Do they, does the extra revenue offset those costs? And unfortunately, a lot of times they're telling us the cost model just does not work. Um, and also, um, some of our private providers um, are profitable currently, or they um, provide a service, particularly in um, the religious setting, that they want to continue.
or they provide a service particularly in the religious setting that they want to continue to do so. And so that's some of the choices that the private providers have, have made, just not to participate.
Yeah, that's what I was worried about. I, I thought that there was something about the being comparable. And I think that's going to be a big ask for a lot of our, our smaller providers.
And that's what we're seeing. So just to elaborate on that, to that end, one of the recommendations that we would have for any opportunity to revisit the legislative requirement in this way, and we've shared this with AIB, is to shift from a percent of slots being filled by private providers to having it be a holistic number of seats. So if the vision is around providing more access to students who, for preschool and pre-K education, then let that be the goal, to increase the number of seats incrementally and over time to make sure we can meet the demand. But right now it's set to have a certain percent of those seats be provided by private providers. That is actually, in addition to the space constraints, that's actually our bigger challenge is the fact that there's a percent of slots that must come from, from private and we are just not seeing the appetite from our private providers to, to even possibly meet that threshold that the law requires.
And I would just like to add one more thing that I know has come up during board meetings and, and communication with the public on the career readiness aspect of the blueprint. And knowing if, if we're trying to help prepare our students to have a marketable trade and, and we physically don't have the space to accommodate the current student population we have now, I just see that as a, a big challenge that we would love to have assistance with solving for our community. Senator-elect Lewis Young?
Thank you. To what extent are you partnering with FCC? You've raised two major areas where they could be of major assistance. One, their early childcare education program. And secondly, career readiness. I'm sure you are, we just don't know too many of the details. So could someone speak to that? And perhaps since the state works closely with FCC, we could play a role in helping to grow that partnership.
Dr. Dyson, do you want to add in on that?
Sure, we have a great partnership with FCC. We've talked about some of these things. We had a retreat earlier. There's a new president there. And so we found it a, a unique opportunity, since I am also new to Frederick County Public Schools, for us to partner. And we have some priorities that we are focusing on. Our teams are meeting, I think later this week with their teams. We've had probably three or four meetings to talk about how we can use them for early childhood education. We've also partnered with the Mount. I think it's FY24, they're going to be adding a early childhood endorsement. We continue to work with Hood, Hood College as well. So we do have a strong partnership with them. But as we, as two new leaders come together and many new players, we wanted to be strategic about how we create a partnership and sort of the synergy around the doing enrollment. I will say, we've been recognized by the state for the amount of students who attend FCC. And we have a unique model that we're using and we have some ideas about how we move forward together. And so I would say our partnership is strong and we are defining really how we look at the blueprint and ways we can leverage some of their space and access even for career and technology.
Wonderful, thank you.
And just jump in here. I know the meeting is being recorded and we do have a few messages in the chat. And so I just wanted to make sure that they're articulated out there. So Krista Whittington wrote, "Good morning to all." She's the legislative aide to Delegate Wyble. And then Senator-elect Lewis Young, you wrote, "There might be a need for greater assistance and incentives for private partners to partner." And then Dr. Sargo just articulated that there's a meeting Thursday, January 5th, with FCC at FCC this week to talk about our partnership with our full teams. Dr. Dyson and President Cheek and the Chiefs of Staff have been meeting monthly since September to deepen this effort. Just want to get them on the record. If there, I, I know that Ms. Yoho is back on the call and I know we do have some sort of timeframe that we would like to manage. Delegate Pippi, or do you think it would be appropriate at this time to move on to the first agenda item or I'll work with you on this?
Of course, yeah. The, everyone, you know, we're, we're part-time legislators and everyone has places to be. This is obviously very important, but yes, you know, efficient is helpful for all. So, thank you.
Then having said that, and also we can all feel free to communicate with each other independently as well throughout the, the course of the legislative term and, and outside of that. I do want to just jump back to our first item on the agenda, which is the Board of Education Legislative Principles. And there is the document there. And I'd like to have Ms. Yoho speak to that Legislative Principles document.
Thank you, President Johnson. And my apologies for the bus stops a quarter of a mile away and down a hill and I get no reception there. So I had to get my granddaughter to the bus. So I'm not going to go through this page by page. Everybody can read. It's very much the same for any of the Frederick County delegation that received it in the past. We update the number of students, employees, buildings. And then on, I believe it might be page six, page seven, Dr. Lebo is always able to provide the requests for construction funding and what's going on. So those are the main updates. For me, with the Legislative Principles of our board and the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, one of our big ones that comes as no surprise to legislators is we do not love unfunded mandates. We understand that you have a lot of responsibilities and requests and people constantly wanting something from you. We would like you to come to us if it has to do with the schools. Mabe and John Woolams, the legislative person for that organization, monitors about 400 education bills a year. And they're very good at realizing what might be unintended consequences. So frequently, we see well-intended bills that then are going to pass costs or time constraints. And so, you know, for instance, Delegate Kerr shepherded through a seizure bill. And we understand that that, and it, it passed and the schools are working with it. And it's, it's actually, I think, going okay because we work together to iron out what might be the repercussions. Nurses, school nurses were very concerned about the legality of some of the training for seizures being passed to people that are not medical. So the, the details were worked out together and it's a better bill because of that. It's more, we're more able as a, as a school system to implement what the intent of the bills are. So we, we like to work together for the benefit of all and we appreciate that. And so this just lays out our legislative principles and everything we do through the, the course of the session should refer back to this. We will, it's right now in draft form because of time and board changing. We'll be approving it in the near future at one of our January meetings, hopefully. And then a copy will be sent to you of the finalized version. I don't anticipate a lot of changes. And so if you have any questions, if you've had a chance to look through, we can take those now. We have plenty of people on here. Ms. Pellegrino, Dr. Lebo are always wonderful, as I said, about providing information. We have Dr. Eric Lures Phillips from Public Affairs that can answer things, Dr. Sargo. So lots of people that can help answer if you have any questions. Otherwise, it'll be sent to you and you can just refer to that during the year if you wonder what might Frederick County Board of Education do on any given piece of legislation.
And if there's no burning questions, Karen, Ms. Yoho, could you please move right on to presenting on the LINKS funding? You're also on that next agenda item.
Absolutely. Yes, let me pull that up. So the reason I thought this was important to include on the agenda is with having so many new people to our delegation, since it more than doubled in size, this might not be something that especially the, the new folks from Washington County and Carroll County are even familiar with. We also have this changeover of governors. So we've been dealing with David Brinkley in the Budgeting Office, who's a Frederick County native and he's very familiar with LINKS. But, so the letter is attached. I thought Catherine asked if there was anything. I said, yeah, that kind of explains it well. So Michelle Shearer is the, a teacher at Frederick High, who's very involved with the LINKS program. And LINKS stands for Linking Youth to New Experiences. And Dr. Nancy Grassmick was very integral in helping to formulate this program at Frederick High. And I recommend that you visit there. They are always happy to show off their program. And what it seeks to do briefly, and anybody please chime in, is just sort of make education a little bit more flexible for the students at Frederick High. So if a student can't get there early in the morning at the regular time of the first period because they have a job, they can stay for an extra class at, at the end of the day or they can take all five sessions. Dinner is provided for those students. And, and the Linking students, they bring in a lot of speakers or they take the students on field trips. Might be a group of 20 students. I accompanied them when one of the restaurants was still open. It closed right after that, but they got to hear from the head chef and from the manager. And, and then they got to help prepare lunch and then we got to eat and they got to ask questions. So new experiences, anything the students might want. Brad Young, former board member, now council member, council president, has frequently gone to Frederick High to speak on financial matters. And so anybody that they can connect in, and it's just getting those students. So this is very much college and career readiness. And so because it is a unique program, it does take additional funding. The state has been very good. I always say around 260,000-ish, but it's, the number is in there. I'm just not finding it right away. And so we do always ask for this. This letter was sent to Mr. Brinkley since they were preparing a lot of the budget. And we'll have to find out who Governor-elect Moore's financial people are, work with them in future. But, you know, this will come as part of the budget and we hope that you all will help look out for it and, and approve it. So that was a lot and a little bit of time. But if there are any questions, I'll be quiet. We've got, again, lots of folks that can, can answer.
And it was 236,599 hours.
Thank you, right in the end of the first paragraph. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Dr. Miller?
Okay.
One thing I didn't see is, so the second cohort just graduated. What was the number of the second cohort? Like, how many students are, are completing the program? As far as the initial cohort from the 2021 versus what are set to complete in 2023?
That is a good question and I'm wondering that, I don't have that information right in front of me. I know we could certainly get you that, absolutely. Does anybody, Dr. Dyson?
We can get that information. We have to submit a report to the state every year. So we can provide that. We'll have Catherine send that out to the delegation.
Okay. And then if, I know there was particularly a healthcare portion and then as far as the competency-based learning, is there, and are there plans to expand it to other schools? Because I know it initially was built as like a model for high school for the future. And then how you're tying it to the, to the blueprint? Those are the kind of some of the questions that I had. So, you know, however, if that's in the report, if you send me that, whatever, whatever way you would like to answer those is great.
There is an appetite, I believe, to, to expand. But we, we're in that, if you look at Plan Do Study Act, we're still in the study phase. And we would also have to have the budget and the staffing to do it elsewhere. So I think right now with the state, we have to study it for a couple more years to see the impact. Just the numbers that you're saying quantify its impact. So I think there's an appetite to expand it in the future. It's an excellent program. I've been there a number of times to see the children work. And also the staff and our staff are very excited about it. But I do think it's premature to say that we would expand it at this time.
And if I can add in, I would absolutely agree with Dr. Dyson. A report is sent to the state, I keep losing things, September. Reports have been submitted annually by December 30th to the Maryland General Assembly. So they can get you a copy of that report that was already submitted with all those numbers because that is, and I will tell you that Michelle Shearer would be totally on top of all of that. She is a great, and what they also have are what are called advocates. And so rather than a guidance council or in addition to the guidance council, these advocates really work with the students. And it's one of the things I like about the program where students really feel like somebody is watching out for them, talking with them, connecting with them. So to me, that's one of the other, other things. And yes, the idea I think has always been to try to expand it, but you want to make sure what you're doing is, is working and is effective.
And then also I'll just add into from my conversations with Michelle, that the idea behind LINKS is it's not necessarily just a cohort. They're trying to provide LINKS opportunities for all the students at Frederick High School. And, and so that's, you know, we're approaching 2,000 students there. So the, the idea is that it's, LINKS opportunities are available to every student.
I guess I would want to know, like, how many are taking advantage of it then? Is that, then that's the question? As far as if you're talking cohorts, that was your terminology, not mine as far as cohorts.
I'll, I'll, I'll add that if, and Karen echoed this, if, if you, if you take advantage of an opportunity to meet with Michelle Shearer, she can provide you a calendar of all the experiences that they're linking students with. And it's pretty amazing, that calendar fills up a month, months in advance. And, and the experiences that they offer to our students through partnerships with many of our county workforce providers, biotech, manufacturing. It, it's pretty amazing when she showed us in a presentation, the calendar system that the kids are able to go on. And it's, it looks like kind of a field trip, but they have a really tight partnership with these organizations in which they provide these kids with actually a, a program. When they go there, there's team building. There's, you know, it, it just immerses them in what they're trying to accomplish in those particular professions. And if you look at that calendar, those slots fill up very quickly. So that, that in itself speaks for a need to expand programs like that. Because her, her data tells us that when kids are exposed to experiences like that, they perform better in their core classes because then they recognize the importance of those core classes to get them to meet those experience. Once they see an experience that they're really excited about, it motivates them to perform better in their core classes. So she can provide a lot of that data for you. I would encourage you, she's very open. I know Dr. Dyson and Dr. Sargo could probably navigate that for you to take advantage of an opportunity to meet with Dr. Shearer and really get immersed in that program. Because, you know, like Dr. Dyson said, we'd love to expand it, but that costs money. We're asking for $236,000 just to keep it going at Frederick. So we'd love to expand it. And I think the kids' excitement in those programs proves that it, it is at least, is at least working anecdotally. And as Dr. Dyson said, and I think Delegate Pippi touched on, is that we do need specific data. We need, it's not, it's not, it's not just about where's the money going? It's about how effective is it? It's about what are the results? What's the return on the investment? Not just auditing programs, but finding out, is it, is it, is it working? And I want to thank Delegate Senator-elect Lewis Young. She sent out a copy of the legislative priorities for us to review. And I was encouraged that MSD is embarking on a study to take another look at standardized testing versus true evaluation of how our kids are doing. So I'm, I'm encouraged that they're, they're looking into those. So I'm encouraged that they're looking into those studies. And I would encourage you guys, you all, all of you all, as legislators, to continue to push for studies like that to determine how can we truly evaluate how our kids are excelling? Because I think there's any number of data out there that shows that standardized testing is not necessarily the, the proof's not in the pudding that that's actually a good way to measure the success of our students. So I'm encouraged by some of these studies that are being put on. And again, thank Delegate Louis Young for sending that out so we could review that. So thank you all very much.
And again, unless there's any other burning questions. Delegate Pippi, if it's okay with you, I would like to move on to construction funding with Dr. Lebo. Okay, then we shall move along. Dr. Lebo, are you ready? I didn't give you much advance warning.
No, I'm very good. Members of the delegation and Board of Education members, appreciate the opportunity to give you just a status update on school construction funding and really be able to highlight some of the projects that we've been able to move forward with your support. But before I can touch on the projects and funding specifically, I want to jump back to the point that Ms. Pellegrino made with our enrollment growth. Frederick County saw an almost 1,700-student enrollment growth for this school year, which means that we're operating at 100% capacity at the elementary level and 98% capacity at the high school level. With our enrollment projections for the fall of 2023, that, we anticipate another 700-student, roughly 700-student increase over the next year, which means we'll operate at 102% of capacity at the elementary level and 99% capacity at the high school level. Growth in Frederick County, as you all are well aware, continues. Frederick is a great place to live and to work. And so folks are moving here. We have seen a slight decline in the number of permits pulled in the county proper area, but we've seen an increase within the Frederick City area. So as a whole, and that's how we sort of help measure where our growth is over the next year, is what are permit pullings looking like on new home construction? And the market, even with the downturn, is remaining strong in the Frederick City area. There are many, many projects that continue to move forward, even with interest rates increasing for home loans. So that just means that Frederick County is going to continue to grow, and we'll need continued support for school construction. One of the things, and the challenge for our board and our staff, is how do you balance the need for new seats with the replacement of aging facilities? And we still have our aging facilities that grow older and older each year. Thankfully, we've been able to invest in the replacement of a number of our older schools and been able to replace them with larger schools. And that's where I really want to touch on first. With specific funding that was provided to the district through the Built to Learn Act of 2020, we are just now seeing the availability of those funds over the past year. That has allowed our county to accelerate projects, such as the replacement of Waverly Elementary School, which is our now largest elementary school in the county and has a state-rated capacity of over 1,000 students, a much-needed capacity challenge in the western portion of Frederick City. We're under construction at Brunswick Elementary right now to replace that aging facility and increase its capacity. And we're under design at both Green Valley and Valley Elementary Schools to replace both of those schools and increase capacity as well. That now leads us into the FY '24 capital funding request. And as I begin this, I want to just remind the delegation of the NOT Commission report that was released in January of 2018, which is now, you know, a five-year-old report where that recommendation was that the state baseline for funding for school construction should be $400 million. And we still have not achieved that mark set forth by the NOT Commission. And again, as we talk about inflationary increases, that will continue to create challenges for us to address our capacity and aging infrastructure. And that ties in directly to one of our board's legislative principles. That's the reason I wanted to touch on that, where they would encourage the delegation to seek and to meet that $400 million threshold as soon as possible and look at possible enhancements based on inflationary increases. As I talk about current projects, I want to also note our relationship with our county government. As you know, our county government is a great partner in our school construction funding process in addition to the state. And we have what I believe to be a very unique relationship with our county. We certainly believe that our new county executive Fitzwater and the new county council will continue that tradition of great working relationship with our county staff to be able to devise a capital budget that is able to achieve our goals. And again, the implementation of that Built to Learn funding required an investment from the county. They were able to meet those requirements, which has really allowed us to move forward our capital budget requests from the out years. And we're really seeing some of the fruits of that in our FY '24 request. The one challenge with the FY '24 request, and we are very pleased with the initial recommendation of roughly $33.5 million from the Interagency Commission on School Construction. The one challenge with that is only 17.8 of that is from the traditional CIP funding. The remaining 15.7 is from the EGRC funding, which is the enrollment growth and relocatable classrooms portion of the capital budget. And so that's not a guarantee every year. And that's really a realization of the growth that we're seeing and where we are as it relates to other growth across the state. But if that portion of the funding goes away in future years, we really can't sustain our capital needs with $17 million annually from the state. So I just wanted to highlight that. We're very appreciative of the recommendation again this year. We believe our county will be able to meet their obligations associated with that recommendation, and which is, again, really allowing us to address some of our aging infrastructure and move projects forward. And with that, I'm able to answer any questions. And again, appreciate the support and time this morning.
Senator-elect Louis Young?
I actually have a generic budget question. Of all the budget issues that have been mentioned, how many of these have already been put through as a request to Secretary Brinkley? And how many of these requests are new? Could you at some point break that down for us? I am optimistic that many of the requests that are submitted to the current governor have a better chance of remaining than new requests after the fact. But with that being said, as you all know, the budget process at the state level is, it starts with the governor. Then it goes to one of the chambers, and we alternate every other year. And then it goes to the other chamber. So if there's a request that isn't in the governor's budget that remained, or the chamber that goes first, we have a very short period of time to try to get that through. But that means that we need to very quickly identify what's missing. So if you all could give us a heads up of what's been requested and what are the new requests, it will assist us in being able to look out for what's missing. In particular, LINKS. I think somebody said you did talk to, I want to say Senator Brinkley, but that's dated, Budget Director Brinkley, about the LINKS program. So if that's in already, I'm fairly confident we can make a case to keep it in. But if it's new, we need to be laying the groundwork now.
And Johnny? I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Pellegrino.
Yeah, currently, the LINKS money has been in, I believe, the last five budgets. And Ms. Yoho and I, I think it's the first thing we look for when the governor's budget is released every year, to make sure it's still in there. So if by some chance it's not, we will be more than happy to alert the delegates and the senators regarding that and to let you know that that is a concern, and we need that funding to be put back into the budget.
And the letter did get sent to Secretary Brinkley. But because of the elections, and it just, it was an odd year. I was just getting legislative responsibilities down, and the elections kind of changed timelines. So I didn't get confirmation that, from Secretary Brinkley, that it was put in before he's always confirmed that.
Okay, thanks.
Senator-elect Louis Young, did you have another question? Because I noticed we're at 9:02, and I know some members are leaving the call. I had a comment in the chat from Delegate-elect Chris Fair, who thanked everyone for the work on the material this morning. He has to attend a pre-scheduled meeting at 9:00, sending all my best. I know Board Member Bass has had to leave the meeting. I did have a request via text from Ms. Pellegrino on addressing concerns over a Time to Care Act. So Delegate Pippi, if you would let us have her make those concerns known, I would be grateful. And then we shall wrap up. All right, thank you. Leslie?
Thank you very much. I'm sure one of the topics you guys are going to discuss during the legislative session is the Time to Care Act that was passed in the last legislative session. Back in December last month, there was a joint letter sent from the Maryland Association of Counties, the Maryland Board of Educations, the State Superintendent Association, and the Maryland Municipal League about the concerns regarding the timing of this implementation. Right now, the Maryland Department of Labor has to put recommendations out by this June on the contribution rates into the plan, and also how we could potentially be exempt from the plan if we have benefits that would equate to the state program. And I know we've had discussions here at FCPS about, we have a very rich leave plan. We potentially could qualify, but we don't know what those guardrails are yet. And by not knowing that information until June, I have no idea what to put in our budget for next year for contribution rates. We potentially may need to change our leave benefit payments slightly. That would take negotiations, et cetera, with our unions. And again, all of this is supposed to then go into effect October 1. So you've got three months from when the Department of Labor is supposed to put out the rules to when this is supposed to go into effect. And in between, if you ask for an exemption, you would have to file in July or August for that exemption for October 1. So those are some concerns, and I'm sure it's going to be a big discussion you're going to have during the legislative session. We are here, if you've got questions or want to know how we're dealing with this, you know, at the municipal or the LEA levels, please feel free to reach out to us, because that is a concern as we go into the FY '24 budget cycle.
Thank you, Ms. Pellegrino. Well, Delegate Pippi, I know, again, it's five after nine. We had upcoming legislative priorities. I do think, you know, I'd also like to thank Senator-elect Louis Young for sending out the legislative session priorities document. And we got it yesterday. I wasn't able to read through the whole thing, but I was able to read through all the education parts, and I found it very beneficial. And in that manner, would dislike to encourage that more information sharing between our respective parties. You know, I think we see now that you would appreciate more information about things that we're doing. And I also support the idea of making sure that we're holding everyone accountable and that we can show outcomes from the investment that we're making in dollars that we're receiving from the state and the county and the federal government with respect to how that's being used for educating our students. I personally would like to wish you all the best of a legislative session and working well together for the people of your communities. And we're here to help in any way that we possibly can.
And if I could, any information that you have that you feel could better assist us in kind of growing that partnership with the school board, you know, feel free to forward that along, and I'll make sure that each member gets it. Any ideas that you have, anything that comes to mind that may kind of reflect on the conversation we had today, just send it, and then I'll make sure that everybody gets it. And then the last thing is, you know, I feel pretty confident that, you know, the welfare of our children in Frederick County is probably one of the most important things to the citizens of this county. And so, you know, it really behooves all of us to work together to ensure that our kids are looked after and their education is moving in the right direction. And so we definitely want to work with you guys on kind of moving that needle forward. So we appreciate the opportunity to meet with you. And, you know, we look forward to kind of talking and moving forward together.
Thank you for your kind words of support. And again, it's mutual. And again, we wish you all the best. If nobody has anything else further, I would like to adjourn this meeting with our gratitude for everyone's time this morning. And again, this doesn't stop the communication, that we will carry on. And again, thank you very much for sharing your time with us this morning.
Thank you.
Okay. For that, the meeting shall be adjourned.